All right, so, ladies and gentlemen, sorry for the delay, but, you know, we're only as good as our software. All right, so it is 6:05, it is Monday, the 13th of June. I'd like to call into session the Planning Commission for the City of Leavenworth. How many people, show hands, how many folks have been to a Planning Commission meeting before? So, no one, okay, good. So, we've got some administrative things that we need to take care of, and then we're going to go ahead and talk about the three items that we're going to talk about. A little bit more discussion about that when we get to that. All right, so do we have a quorum? I think everyone's had an opportunity to see the minutes from our June 1 meeting. Does anyone have a question or concern, or something they would like added to the minutes from last month? If so, please identify yourself and let us know what they are. All right, there is deathly silence, so I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from June the first.
I so moved, they be accepted.
Thank you, looking for a second?
This is Sherry, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, opposed, nay? All right, minutes are approved as written. All right, let's move on to the new business. So, we've got three items that we're going to talk about today, and so essentially what's going to happen is, I'm going to ask for the staff to read to us, to talk to us about what those issues are, and then the commissioners are going to ask the staff questions, if we happen to have any questions about what we see in the report. Once that's over, and I'm assuming, sir, you are the applicant for the House in Ottawa?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, if we have it, I'm glad that you're here. If we have any questions, if you will ask you to come to the board. When we're done talking among ourselves, we'll open it to the public hearing. If you have something that you want to say about the issue that we're talking about, I'll need you to go to the microphone, please ensure that you social distance. When you get there, just, if you'll state your name and your address, and then please make your statement, and your questions or statements should be addressed to us, the commissioners, and not the applicants, not other people in the room, right? So, it's the dialogue between you and us, and I appreciate every, all of you, like I said, all of you coming in today to talk about that. All right, so, new business. Are we good, Michelle? Okay, all right. New business is a rehash of what we talked about, or actually a relook at what we discussed last month, and is special use permit 2020-09 for 1019 Ottawa. Call for the staff report, please.
Staff, Mr. and I is requesting for a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in an R16 zoning district. The two-family dwellings are allowed in R16 zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. The current location is an empty lot. The property owner recently purchased the lot and is requesting a special use permit to allow the development of two-family dwelling structure. Upon the request of the commission during the June 1 meeting, for the applicant to provide conceptual site plans, Mr. and I has submitted some documentations for the commission to review. The applicant has submitted a few plans and a list of possible conceptual ideas. Oh, I looked at that. Let me try to get it. Oh, that's not what I want. This is what I want. Okay, so, there's that. Scroll on down. Here we go. And, these are his, his written ideas, starting with the very basic and then adding, adding more to them, all the way to number three. And if you look, this is not very good, but this is a floor plan of what this duplex would look like, with conceptual visuals, as well as what the front would look like, based on his conceptual ideas.
All right, thank you. And the staff recommends the approval of the special use permit, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I now open it for commissioners, if you have a question of the staff. Again, please identify yourself and... All right, assuming we have no questions for our staff, do we have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, hey, this is Chris. It looks like this is what we asked for. So, this, this is basically, so, so if I'm looking at this right, you're going to choose, the applicant's going to choose one of these designs?
Yes, sir.
It's affirmative.
You can go ahead and go that way, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I can hear you.
What I did was, I looked at the basic drawing for the duplex, which is what you see up there on the top of the screen on the set of plans there, and I'm going to orientate the driveway towards Ottawa Street, since there's already eight or nine driveways coming off of Ottawa to other houses between 10th and 13th. Then I go down my list, and Concept 1 is the basic design, and I've decided not to put any fireplaces in it because of the fire hazard and everything of that nature. Then the main part of the house will be widened by three feet on each side. So, if you look at the main body of the house, I want to widen it three feet each way, so each half will have an additional three feet for bedrooms and all that stuff to make more room in the house, because the original bedrooms were nine feet by 10 feet, or something like that, and that's just too small, you can't get a dresser in it or anything else. Anyway, Concept 2 includes the basic design plan, widening the house, et cetera, no fireplaces. Then I will put the timberline roof singles on it, and not just a regular three tab or anything like that, I want to make it look decent. And then I would like to take that second drawing I had up there, which is another duplex, I want to modify that for this house, so it's a gable look on the front, which all the rest of the houses in the neighborhood are gabled in on the front of the houses. So, I want to look, make it look the same as what everybody else has on the thing. So, it'll be a gable, with a double gable on the front and a single gable on the backside. And the reason for that is that the garage will have a gable, then the main body of the house will have a gable sitting behind it. And then, and the gables, the drawing I had there, it was one out of a booklet for duplexes and stuff, and it was offset, but the one I will put on will be symmetrical to each other in the front. And I will probably get rid of that front porch that you had seen on the basic drawing, and just make it, you know, the duplex itself there, which is like all the rest of the houses for the most part. Plus, that porch didn't serve no real purpose to what I saw. Then I will construct on the backside of the lot, two, two-car carports. So, we'll have additional off-street parking, so folks can come around back, because it's got three bedrooms in the concept for the duplex. So, I'm assuming it'll be a family of, you know, three people probably, or maybe four or so, and, and probably have teenagers or so, because I'm going to try to rent to folks in the 50 to 60 range, somewhere in that range, I'd like to have with older people in there. I'm making everything on the floor, same floor, it's going to be a slab, and we'll meet all the rest of the requirements as far as what the city wants for a slab and that stuff, because the sewer's only six feet or so deep there. And if I put a basement in it, then I have to, you know, put a sewer setting up three or four feet up in the air, so I can make the sewer there. So, I'm just going to put a slab there, so we have no problems with the elevation and the slope of the sewer going to the main one. Then the one that I really want to do is the last one, the Concept 3, which is the Concept 1 and Concept 2 added to Concept 3 here. And additional things in Concept 3, well, I'll add a brick veneer on the front of the house. Across the entire house, I'll put a brick veneer that will match it with the brick in different houses in the area there. Probably more like a red with a black or something like in it, to give it some accent. I'll plant three, four to five trees on either side of the house, to give shade and, you know, a decorative look to the house, so, you know, mask it off a little bit and breaks up the corners and stuff. Then, that's all, I don't have my glasses, I forgot. I will fence on each side of the house. I will run a four-foot fence or whatever elevation is allowed. Chain-linked type fence around for privacy for folks to, you know, if they have a pad or something like that, it's contained inside the area, and plus just for security and stuff. The next thing I'll do is a little utility shed, and what I'll do with that, so their folks can have a place to put their lawnmower, tractor, or whatever they want to have. And what I'm looking at is to build it right in the center of both houses, or both halves, excuse me. And I'll build a one utility shed with a divider, so each side will have a privacy putting their weed eaters, et cetera, into their side, and have their own locking key and everything, and so it'll be a double one, there with two doors on either side. So, that's kind of where I want to go with it. Any questions?
So, it'll be like a separate, it'd be a separate building?
Yes, sir.
On the front?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It'll be a standalone one. One of the things I have to work out with the city is, I think you guys have a standard size that it can be like a nine by eight or something like that? Well, I want to build, I want to build a double that, but each side will have a nine by eight or whatever that requirement would be.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. I'm going to open it up for public comment, if anybody would like to speak either for or against, or make a comment on this particular special use permit, please feel free.
Let me unmute him.
All right, no one here wishes to speak, I guess it's, any other last thoughts, ladies, So essentially, we have three options. We can motion based upon the findings as stated and conditions as presented to recommend approval to the City Commission. We can motion to recommend denial to the City Commission, or we can table the issue for additional information or consideration. This time I entertain a motion, or any additional comments?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that it's evident that what you're proposing to us is in harmony with the area, and it looks very nice, thank you. So, based on that, I'd recommend approval for the special use permit to be allowed for the two-family dwelling at 1019 Ottawa.
Thank you. Second?
This is Chris.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, opposed, nay? No nays? All right, in that case, the motion carries. I'd like to talk about, let's talk about our second issue today. That is 2020-16-special use permit, 4320 Hughes Road, telecommunication tower. Have the staff report, please. Sorry, I'll talk slower next time.
No, you could, I ended up freezing it anyways, so, okay. Mr. Clark, on behalf of the Network Real Estate and the subject property owner is requesting a specific, or a special use permit to allow a 196-foot-tall monopole-type communication tower and related ground equipment. The subject property is located in a zoned R19 medium-density single-family district and is occupied by the residential dwellings with accessory structures. The proposed 196-foot tower is commissioned by AT&amp;T to serve customers in the Leavenworth area with space available for two additional carriers to co-locate. The maximum height of the tower antenna when two or more antennas are co-located on two or more companies on a single pole is 170 foot. The Planning Commission has the authority to make the exception to the height requirement as a condition to the approval of the special use permit. The proposal of a 70-by-70 fence area to enclose the tower and related ground equipment assessed will be provided by, oh, access will be provided by a paved 12-foot-wide access drive coming off of Hughes Drive Road. There is no signage proposed, except for the safety and identification as required by the Federal Communications Commission. The fencing enclose will be screened with green, privacy slats, sufficiency existing foliage exists around the side of the tower from adjoining properties. Development regulations require for each foot of tower, there shall be a minimum of one foot, one point, here we go, 1.05 foot of setback from any property line that would require a minimum of 205.8 foot setback from all property lines for the proposed tower, which is provided. So, on this one, you're going to need to, if you decide to approve it, you need to do it with the condition, with the exception of the height being 200, or 26 feet over the maximum requirement. And we, we, staff, this is approved, we recommend to approve it with the, with the conditions.
Right, thank you. Questions from the commissioners?
I have a question. Have we received any protest from people complaining of that location, putting that tower there?
We, we received two phone calls today with concerns of this property. I, I don't know what's...
One has called in.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody?
Okay. Good, there you go.
Okay.
Okay.
I was like, I'm not sure what they said.
Okay, thank you.
Again, commissioners, any questions for all the staff? Is there a representative from the, thank you, there is a representative here from the...
From the real estate.
From the real estate company, if we have questions for the applicant. Questions of staff? All right, question? Thanks, Chris.
Yes, Chris, maybe I'm just not understanding, I mean, what is, we have a, we have a, how tall these towers can be in the city, and I'm just not sure why, I mean, I know what they're saying, that it would improve the signal strength and the throughput speeds, but I'm just not sure about that extra 26 feet.
Would that question best be answered by the applicant's representative?
Yes.
Probably, stand by.
Yes.
Please, sir, if you just identify yourself and give us your address. Thank you.
Did y'all receive the email conversation?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good, because it's not in this...
Hi, good evening, and my name is Glenn Clarky, and I am with Network Real Estate out of St. Louis, Missouri. Our address is 5055 Highway N, St. Charles, Missouri. We represent AT&amp;T in acquiring tower sites and zoning tower sites. The height, the additional height was, there were two reasons why we asked for it. Number one, it was because to reach the Veterans Administration Hospital, that was the only way they could, the signal would get there from this location, and, and also the college. So, part of the reason we wanted the additional height is that this location, the ground elevation of this location is low, but we thought that it would work, because it's actually, the buffer around it is buffered by trees, and you can't, you know, with our photo sims, and we had sent some in, that the visual on this was going to be almost just the top of the tower. So, that was part of, part of why we had to have the tower an additional 20 feet, so the signal would carry as far as they needed it to carry, as, so it would relate to the other towers that it's trying to reach, and increase the coverage.
Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I mean, it's right here in black and white, it's just, I was a little concerned about that extra footage for, for the purpose, so, yeah, it answered my question.
Thank you. Sir, how many other sites did you survey before deciding on asking for this one?
This particular one, how many locations did we look at? We looked at probably four or five. And how the, how this process works is AT&amp;T will give us an area, a very small area to look. We will give them different areas that, number one, somebody has to be interested, number two, it's constructible, and then it works within their network, and how it, how it relates to the sites that they're trying to cover. So, this is what they settled on, they like this area. We looked at it from a construction perspective and an aesthetic perspective, and it seemed to fit, it could fit our setbacks, and it was kind of hidden down in the, down in that kind of area where it's wooded, surrounded by a lot of, lot of woods.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's what we looked at.
Thanks, sir.
You know, my, my question relates to the same thing, that was, was that a primary site, and you looked at other sites, so thank you for answering that one. I guess, you kind of alluded to it, though, is that height that you determined is needed because of signal strength, especially with hospitals, especially for the college.
Yeah.
What else, who else profits from that, and what kind of radius? Who else in that...
I mean, everybody, the tower, this particular tower, the, the coverage on this tower, the footprint, it won't be just, you know, the interior coverage is huge, is what, one of the things, is it's, it's for data and it's for the people in those hospitals, but the people on the roads will benefit, the residents around there will all benefit, will all benefit from it. There's, the, the coverage in general, the AT&amp;T coverage in general, will be a lot better in that area. This tower will probably be about, the radius of it, and it's a round radius of how these things shoot their signal out, will probably be about five to five and a half miles, meaning it goes out about two and a half miles each way.
That was kind of my question, is how big radius will it enhance the five and a half mile...
Now, that, that depends on the topography, I mean, you know, it, it may go a little further in some areas and less in other areas, but that's about it for a 200-foot tower.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the commissioners?
I was wondering, are they going to have lighting on the tower because of its proximity to the hospital, that interferes with helicopters landing there? And there's also, I think the lighting would be, if they have to have lighting, if they're on lighting, it should have happened at that height, and it will have to be double-wired if they switch to red lighting tonight. The white lighting, especially at that height, is, it really carries a long distance, you're going to have a lot of complaints if you don't switch to red lighting at night.
So, other than the mandatory by, you know, for airplanes not to strike the tower, is there any, there will be no additional lighting on the tower?
No, there won't be any additional lighting.
Will be lighting around the fenced-in area?
No, not at all. No, we don't light that up at all.
Okay.
Other question relates to installing that tower at that height and its primary purpose. Do you already have other plans for other uses and other people, or services that'll be using that tower?
No, I mean, the tower is, per the city code, it has to be built for co-locations. The tower, once the tower is, is constructed, it will be marketed to, you know, Verizon might come along and see it and say, okay, this works for our footprint, and they can co-locate under our T-Mobile, our, a broadband company. We just never, we just never know, because there's so many different wireless things out right now, so we never know. It could be anybody, it could be the fire department, they see, think that it works for them.
Commissioners, any other questions? No, all right, so I will, thank you, sir, and I'll open up the public meeting. Anyone who would like to speak for or against this, please? We have one person?
Yeah, my name is Gordon Cunningham. My name is Gordon Cunningham, I live at 540 Monkey Road, and I've got a few questions and concerns. My first question is, how many, how many current cell towers are in Leavenworth City?
I, I do not have that answer for you. I, I don't know. But I can get that for you later, now that I know that's your question.
And I heard mention of alternative locations, are those locations still being considered if this one should not pass?
Sir, the applicant, applicant, did you catch that?
Yeah, I mean, if...
Sorry, so we're recording it.
So, the, how this works is that the alternative locations get ruled out one at a time based on the coverage objectives and how the signals carry from different locations. So, they, they are not being looked at. So, we, they kind of narrow in on a location that they, that works for the network, and that's the one that they, they propose for, they want us to propose.
All right, thank you. Sir, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. So, basically, if I understand this correctly, this benefits AT&amp;T only and whoever the land is being leased from.
Well, it also benefits the Veterans Administration, and St. Mary's University, and anybody in the local area.
They would be on an AT&amp;T network, correct?
Correct.
Right, so, like, for instance, I'm on Verizon, so it's not going to affect me one way or the other?
Nope, I do not believe so, sir.
So, what, I guess my question is, would the tower, is there going to be like sub-leasings to other companies, where they can also utilize the tower?
Yes.
The answer to that is yes.
It is, it is equipped to be sublet to up to two more companies.
Providers.
And my final concern, has there been any consideration given to health impacts of electromagnetic radiation from cell towers in residential areas?
Stand by. Don't you take your time.
Run, boys, run.
The FCC regulates...
I'm going to refer to the Kemp, to the Kempson West study back in 98 and 2007, where 75% of those within the study living within 900 feet of a cell tower experienced over a dozen health issues, and as those residents were further away from the tower, those issues had decreased. I'm just wondering if any of those health impacts have been a consideration or were studied when this location was determined?
So, we, the FCC controls the amount of, of any kind of signal that comes out of any tower that is built, be it AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. We are strictly regulated to their standards, and the, the answer is, we, everybody stays below what the FCC requires them to stay below. We don't, you know, I don't know about that study, you know, I know there's a study that's out by the American Cancer Society that was published years ago, and they did an extensive study, it's online, I may have sent it in, if I didn't, I can send it to you guys, that they've said that it's, that there really are health impacts. Now, I, you know, I'm not here to debate that, I'm just saying that we are below the FCC standard, but the FCC requires, the FCC regulates every carrier and what kind of signals they're putting out on their networks at any given time, so we're way below that.
I have a question. So, how often does the FCC come by just to check to see what the, you know, what the output is on these towers? Is there a routine inspection?
These towers are monitored, each, each company monitors their towers daily, it's constantly monitored about how, how much power, and yeah, they, I mean, I don't, I don't know for sure, but they do. So, there's, they are, every, every tower that's ever built is monitored to switch, they know exactly what's going on with the tower 24/7, well, how much signal's going out and...
Thank you. Sir, does that answer your question?
It does, I guess my concern is, I just don't feel that it is an ideal location for the reason of health and safety, and my own personal issue is just the eyesore and the obstruction above my tree line, because this is going to be to the northeast of my property at 540 Monkey Road, and I'm just curious as to, what's the diameter of these, of this thing at the two, at the 190-foot mark, at the top of this thing, what's, what's the overall diameter, is that known?
At the top...
And is there like, is there like support cables and...
No.
All those, the furnaces holding it up?
There are no cables, this is a monopole, it, it looks like a big light structure, basically, that's what it, what a monopole is. There's no cables coming off it at all. Probably at the top, with this tower that's 100, or, you know, 196 feet, I'm going to guess that that thing's probably about three and a half feet around at the top, and at the base, it's probably about six feet around, so it just gets thicker as it goes down.
I didn't get that, what was that number?
At the top, I'm, I'm estimating right now, it's about probably around three and a half feet in diameter at the top, and at the base, it probably goes out to about six feet around. As it goes down, it gets thicker, it widens out.
I don't have anything further, other than I just want it to be on the record that I oppose.
All right, thank you, sir. Ma'am, since you've been very patient.
I'm Mrs. DeFreeze. I live at 4237 Lakeview Drive, directly west of the proposed site. And I have to agree with the gentleman who just spoke on the phone, the whole idea of the tower being there, in my mind, it would be an eyesore, but there are also healthcare implications. I read an American Cancer Society study this morning, that stated that there are findings, just, they don't call them strong. And led, what led me to think that maybe in another 10 years, when people want to sell their property, what's the impact on property value? their property, what's the impact on property value? I really don't want this thing in my backyard.
All right.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Sir, you had your hand up.
I have just one question.
Oh, up to the, sorry, sir, up to the podium.
We're on the property with the tower being placed in the center or to one side or in?
It's pretty much, are you familiar with that piece?
No, not.
It's pretty much in the center.
In the premises, in the center?
Yes, it is.
That yellow square there, how, what are dimensions on it?
The yellow square of what?
Oh, the lot. That's the whole lot itself.
What, what size is it?
Oh, the lot?
So, do you want to say?
No, that's the fencing area.
Then we do it.
No, he's asking for the full property. Um, give me one second. Yeah. Let me get on over there. Oh, I don't think we need an. Lot is 7.2, seven and a quarter acres.
Seven and a quarter acres?
Yep. I'll make it. Can you? Right there.
That's a pretty good size. Reason I asked the question, I'm an engineer also, and, well, I worked at Fort Leven. One of the things we ran into when we were doing the studies with the power lines and stuff, when you get the super high voltage, 100,000 volts and stuff like that, 300,000, some, some young men came up with the same issue on electromagnetic waves, and they were talking about it was safe to be, the lines would be safer if you were at least 100 to 200 feet away from them. Anything less than that, then you became subject to some of the effects of electromagnetic waves. That's the only thing, comment I have on it, but that's why I asked, if it's in the center, it should be good, because it's going to be more than 200 feet away from houses and stuff like that. But we had that situation come up when we were dealing with high voltage lines.
Thank you. Sir?
So.
Sorry, wait.
So, the power, I mean, you're, we're talking, we're comparing apples and oranges here. A communication tower, the power that's coming out of a communication tower is very low power. Each antenna is less than 100 watts. So, you're talking huge voltage. These are very low voltage. It's serviced by a 200 amp breaker. That's as much power as that thing holds, well, you know, to run those antennas. That's six antennas. So, each antenna, and it's designed purposely for that, because they, they don't want these signals to go very far for capacity reasons. They only want so many calls to be held, so much data to be held by that tower. So, each antenna is less than 100 watts, what it's actually putting out. So, it's a very, very low-power unit. I mean, yeah, those types of things are, yeah, there are really high-power, powerful lines that go through. This is not that.
Thank you. Any other member of the public would like to make a statement, ask a question? Thank you, sir.
I have a grandmother dead on the corner, 500 Monkey. There's a road that they're going to build, I gather, that goes behind everybody's house. It's going to be paved?
Yes.
And the other question would be, is this road used, like, once a week, once a day, once a month? Is there going to be a lot of going back and forth?
Sir?
I just want to ask you here. I can answer that. So, when they're building.
Sorry, I got, we're recording. By the way, folks, we're recording. We shall see this on YouTube tomorrow morning.
Can, can you repeat your address?
500 Monkey.
500 Monkey, okay.
You want me out there?
Yep, come on it.
I say, we should have just given you a microphone.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The road, that, the access road will be, when that tower is completely finished, the access road will be paved. While they're building it, they'll probably gravel it while the trucks are going in and out. While the construction is going on, there will be some activity. There'll be trucks going in and out. Once it's finished, and the final grading is done, and the paving is done, and everything's done, you probably will not see a truck come out, maybe once every two months. These things are pretty self-sufficient. If a tech comes out, if an antenna goes down, it's about, you know, and if that doesn't happen, you won't see anybody come out there. If it's running the way it's supposed to run, you know, probably going once every six months, they come out and tune the things up and make sure things are any good. So, yeah, it's not, they're, they're visited very infrequent, once they're up and in, tuned into the network.
All right. Thank you. Another question?
No.
For me?
You can say it there.
Sorry. Flip-flop.
My question was, I, I guess I would like to see exactly where it's going to be. It's very difficult to tell from a dot on the thing to tell, like, especially for this lady here. You know, it's closer to her than it is to me, and so she probably has more to object to about, but it's just, it's not really even in the center, and the square is not in the center of the lot, and it's kind of like.
What are GIS?
Well, I know, but this is.
They've got trees, and I can't exactly where it is.
The other thing is, I wouldn't mind seeing a picture of the tower, too. I mean, what does it look like? Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Is it the kind with all kinds of stuff stuck on it, or is it the kind that just?
Hold on one minute. Here's, oops.
It will have a antenna.
Oh, 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 I'm going too fast. I'm going too fast. Stop.
You hit the photo?
We, yeah.
This is their drawing of what it would look like.
Wait, what?
That was the else?
Yeah, yeah, I have it. Yeah, so here, this is what, what it would look like. And then, I'm trying not to go too fast. This is an aerial view of the, in the fence. And then.
Did you guys get the photos that we forward to? That's probably going to help the visuals, because it's pretty nice.
Visual, you know, I have a.
Here, sir.
I have a bunch of pictures.
Here, Mr. Wilson. This is kind of back here on here. We can hear, we can see these trees.
And that raises a question. I mean, why, there's a tower, it's just like that, on the other side behind the school, if I can't attach to that, or put one next to that, or?
Sir, you'll have to come back up and I'll have to speak into the microphone.
Okay, so when, when, again, when we get an area from a wireless carrier that we're, that we, they give us a search area, we look at, first thing we look at is co-location opportunities. That's the first thing we look at, because it's, it's, you know, honestly, it's easier for, to co-locate on an existing tower. Those, if they're in the search area that they give us, and sometimes, and this search area was a quarter-mile around, which is very small. So, we expand it a little bit. We say, okay, there's a tower here, there's a tower here, there's a tower here. We send it into the engineers who are designing these networks, and we say, okay, can they, can you make this work? Can you make this work? None of them worked for them. It just wouldn't, for the network and for their footprint, it, it just doesn't fit into the network they're trying to build and the coverage they're trying to improve in, in the city. So, yeah, they were all, they were all, anything within reason. I mean, we couldn't go two miles away and say, look at this one. But, yeah, we were aware of that one.
Sitting here.
Yeah, we looked at it. We looked at it. It was just, they, they, it was too far away from what they were trying to, to design to.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other, any other listeners have a public, anybody, member of the public who's listening have a question or concern? No? Anybody else that's sitting here, any, any other concerned question? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public meeting. Commissioners, last thoughts or questions? All right, we have three options. Motion based upon findings, it is stated to recommend approval to the City Commission to include the exceptions to the height regulations. We can go ahead and recommend denial to the City Commission, or we can table the issue for additional information or consideration. I am open to a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a comment on the proposal, and that is that, first of all, I want to start off by saying we're sensitive, as I'm sensitive as a board member, to the valid concern raised by people in the community on safety and potential factor land value. So, I'm certainly, we're sensitive to that comments been made. But I've been looking at the greater good to enhance communication strength to, that communication strength to St. Mary College and the hospital. I consider that in the better interest of greater good. And so, based on that alone, with enhancing the potential signal strength in a four- to five-mile radius of St. Mary College and the hospital, I would recommend approval for the special use permit to allow the 196-foot tower, which is an exception to our policy, as I was told, to allow that for 4320 Hughes Road.
All right. Proposed, seconded? Looking for a second, folks.
Yeah, this is Chris. I'll second it.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye or raise your hands. Let me see, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And, folks, this will go before the City Commission next Tuesday, so you have another opportunity to engage.
We only got three.
Huh?
We've only got three so far.
I'm sorry.
We only got three votes.
Sherry? Sherry?
I'm a nay.
All right, so we have three.
And then, as we have heard Linda. I think Chris was a aye, you guys ayes.
Sorry, Linda, what do you got?
Sherry's a nay.
Okay.
Linda, what is your vote?
Can she hear us?
Linda, can you hear us?
Yes. I think there might have been a vote, right?
Yeah, we just, we couldn't hear what you said. Sorry, I talked over you.
Okay, I didn't hear the motion. I'm sorry. But if it was to approve the tower, then I'll vote yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, the motion will carry. Again, folks, if you have a concern, I'm assuming the City Commission meets next Tuesday?
For this?
No, there's actually a two-week.
All right, so it'll be two weeks. So, there'll be another public meeting, at which point, if you want to speak out against the tower, you'll be able to do it.
There's a protest period, so you have 14 days to protest this, if you choose to, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
So, you have 14 days to protest it.
Okay, thank you. I just was taking, I was given the notice, the letter that everybody got, but it's full of three pages of gobbledygook, which no one even could understand. And so, once you can pass that, you're still not sure exactly what you're talking about. There'd be more people, I'm sure there'd be more people here if we made that clear. What, what people need to do is look at all that stuff on the internet. There's a lot of information there.
Are you talking about the letters, the notification letter that was sent out?
Yeah, there's nothing in there.
Yeah, there is a lot of information because of the legal description for this property.
Yeah.
But according to statute, we can't provide that.
Well, I guess what I would like is that, is that wherever it is, all the information is on the computer.
Well, the developmental regulations?
Well, like, there's pictures and diagrams, there's.
Oh, the packet.
You have to come in, you would have to come in and actually look at the packet.
Okay, just look at it on the computer. Internet.
We don't, we don't post this entire thing on the internet.
Oh, I don't know about there.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
But on the notification letter, it does state that you called us or come in and, and you was in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, I am more than freely to answer anything that I can.
So, well, before it goes before the City Commission in two weeks, will another letter go, or another notification go out to neighbors? No. So, there's really no way for us to let citizens know that they've got technically the 14 days, other than, sir, you're carrying it back, or if the gentleman's still on the phone, that's really the only. So, sir, you'd probably need to get the word out to your concerned neighbors, if they want to look at the plan, they're going to have to come in and take a look at it, but I'm sure that our staff would be more than welcome to, willing to walk you through it.
Half of the, well, more than half of those complexes are rentals, so they don't care.
Oh.
There is, there is people along Lake, Lakeview that have nice houses, and they're going to have an issue with it, like the lady.
If you want, you can, in that letter, my phone number's in there, so you can make a call for Jackie Porter, she's the city planner, who's one of us, and we can kind of give you a little more information if you want to call tomorrow. We, like I said, we don't post all of this on the website, but if you want us to email you certain portions, we'd be more than happy to do that.
It looks like 40 pages there, so.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's.
It will be there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, let's, let's move on to our third item. 2020 Tac 22, Tac Special Use Permit, 1906 Cleveland Terrace.
Thank you.
Staff report, please.
All right. The applicant is requesting for a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in an R-16 zoning district located at 1906 Cleveland Terrace. Two-family dwellings are allowed in the R-16 zoning district with approval of the special use permit. The structure on the property has been functioning as a two-family dwelling. The property owner is requesting a special use permit to adequately represent the current use of the structure on the property. And staff recommends approval of the special use permit.
Thank you. Commissioners, very similar to what we talked about in our last session. Obviously, I mean, if you remember, as people are going back to refinance or to take a look at their property, they're going to have to come back to us for a special use permit, so I believe that's what the situation is, very similar to what we did last, last month. Are there any questions or comments or concerns for the planners?
I can scroll down.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that this was the same as what we went into last, last meeting last month. I just wanted to make sure that others were seeing that the same way.
I believe so. Thank you. Other comments? Sports fans? All right, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to either, based upon the findings, the stated and conditions as presented, to recommend approval to the City Commission. Sorry.
I'll let you close the other chair.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to now open it for a public hearing, if there's anyone on the phone that would like to comment about this special use permit. Being no questions, I'll close the public hearing and then ask for a motion. Thank you very much. I'll speak slower.
Anybody want to motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve a special use permit to allow the two-family dwelling at 1906 Cleveland Terrace.
I'll second it. This is Sherry Whitson.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Say nay? No opposed, as such, the match, the motion passed for approval of the special use permit. So, that ends our session for today. Ladies, when's our next meeting?
September 14.
All right, September, September.
Now.
Yeah, so it's, we pushed it off because it led to our weekend.
Oh.
So, it's pushed to the 14th of September.
All right, so 14th, September.
All right, September 14th, and then we have a joint meeting with City Council Tuesday, July 21st, for the comprehensive plan on the updates. Please let us know if you're going to attend or not, that way we can make sure we have enough chairs spaced out. Or we also will have a go-to meeting link as well. But other than that, that's all I have.
Is there?
Is the joint meeting going to be here? That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be during the city council.
Meeting, what's this session, yeah?
Got it.
And will the person that we hired, who wrote the plan, going to be there, essentially, is that a final brief back, or is that for us to ask questions, or?
They should be here either in person or-
A go-to.
A go-to meeting.
Yeah.
Is there, I was on the, I was on the website this morning, or this afternoon, is there another meeting, say?
There's one Wednesday.
About?
For the, it's a focus group one.
Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry.
Are you talking about the city commission?
Yeah.
There's one tomorrow.
But it's nothing that we've, other than we've already addressed, which we really haven't addressed, so.
There may be things for the first or second, probably second iteration, going to the city commission, because they have to approve it twice.
Thank you. Sorry, my mind's wandering. I apologize.
Confirming, since you did say our next meeting is September 14th, so we have nothing filed in advance for our August meeting. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Other, Linda, Chris, Sherry?
Yeah, the only thing I got, this is Chris, you can mark me down. I'll be there on the 21st, but I will not be at the September meeting. The 14th is my anniversary. I think my wife would kill me if I went to a meeting on our anniversary.
Bring her here. Come on.
All right.
We'll put candles up, everything. Don't worry.
All right, thank you.
I miss you, Chris. You're the only one I can hear.
Well, have him invite you out for his anniversary. All right, thank you all. I appreciate your attendance and participation. I'll call the meeting, close at 6:55. Thanks, and stay safe.